Good afternoon and welcome to City Council briefing for March 13th. Ms. Farnsworth, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zapome.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and if you can see from the pink crown and the candy bags, we are celebrating Councilmember Stratton's birthday today. Happy birthday.
Thank you, and do you know that I was born on a Friday, the 13th? That explains a lot, doesn't it?
It does. It does. We don't have an advanced agenda. Next Monday, we're not having a legislative meeting or a briefing session, but we are having committee meeting that day, and we are having the rest of our meetings that week. But as is often the case, there are proposed adjustments to tonight's agenda. And the first one I wanted to cover was there's a resolution that has been circulated, Resolution Number 22, and is proposed by the administration and sponsored by Councilmember Kinnear and myself, and it requests the administration, the City Council is requesting that the administration develop a program that the administration wants to develop to create a funding stream for GFC waivers and incentives so that we can use those to target particular types of development and housing and give some relief to the GFC fund from other funding sources, including most likely the general fund's share of part of the utility taxes that otherwise would go to the general fund. So that's been circulated. I'm looking for a, well, first I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules.
Sub-moved and suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion about suspending the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right, the rules are suspended. And now is there a motion to add Resolution 22? Sub-moved.
What's your motion?
Yep.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
So is, was this developed by the council and the administration, or?
The administration developed it and wrote it and sent it to us, and then we modified it slightly.
Okay.
So, yeah, I guess I'm just kind of curious, has there been any sort of fiscal analysis done to determine what the impacts would be of taking the money out of the general fund to pay for this?
No, because the program hasn't been developed. The resolution is for them to come up with a program and an analysis. So it's very broad, it doesn't tell them how to do it. I'm just saying, based on conversations with utilities, that's one potential thing. When the GFCs get paid, Utilities Department has to pay 20% of that to the general fund. It's not an extra 20% that the developer has to pay on top of it, it's just Utilities owes that to the general fund once those are paid. And so that was just a suggestion they had. But we're asking them, including Steve McDonald, to work on a program and come back to us. Any other discussion on adding to tonight's agenda? All those, yeah?
We're just talking about this one particular issue right here.
Yep. All those in favor of adding Resolution 22 to tonight's legislative agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, that's added to the agenda. There's also a series of three different resolutions regarding the Primera building that were circulated. Earlier today, there was one basically directing the city to continue on with the purchase and sale agreement and sign a notice to proceed to Primera to say, let's get it closed. Then there was another one that was circulated that said, we're still interested in Primera, but we are not going to go through the deal at this time, based on the feasibility study. And then the third one, based on the meeting that we just had, says we need to sign something that says we're not going to go through with it unless we get an extension from the owner of the purchase and sale agreement, which were, our attorneys are trying to negotiate. So if they grant the extension, that would happen. If it wasn't granted by the 20th, then a notice would be given to them that we're backing away out of the deal, and then we get our earnest money back.
So do you want us to move for one of those?
One of those three.
I move for choice number three.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay.
Well, choice number three again?
Choice number three is we're not going to do the deal, we're going to sign something that says we're rescinding the deal unless we get an extension, and then we won't do anything during that extension.
Yeah, and the purpose of this is to get our earnest money back so that we don't lose the earnest money, but also signal that we're still interested in the building.
Yep.
We're not closing the door completely.
Yep. Councilmembers Zapome.
And so what happens, I guess, in the 120 days, then we have to either?
Have the same choice again.
Yeah. And so this is just an extension, there's no?
Yeah, it's an extension if they agree to it. If they don't agree, then the deal's over.
But would we need more funding for more study, integral study to do more, or?
There's already money allocated for it from ARPA, but maybe, it just depends. Yeah.
Mr. Perkins, where's the administration on Resolution Number Three, this option?
We, as I indicated during committee, we would request a 120-day extension to allow more time to look at those global issues that were discussed at committee, so we would be in support of this action.
All right, all those in favor of adding version three of Resolution 23 that was circulated just a few minutes ago indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right, that's added. All right. Then my understanding is there are two potential motions on ordinance C-36369. One is a motion to substitute to the version that's currently in the packet, potentially that Councilmember Kinnear would bring, and then Councilmember Bingle also has a proposal for substitution, and I would suggest that we start with Councilmember Bingle, if you want to make your motion.
Sub-moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Bingle, if you want to explain the high points of your motion.
So the reason why I think this one is really important is that the fees, without a doubt, need to go up, nobody denies that. We're just debating the amount to which they need to go up. My proposal is an interim step to increase the fees overnight 66%, which is the consumer price index, the inflation over the last 21 years since these were installed. It would increase, you know, a $1,200 water connection to $2,000, a $2,400 sewer connection to $4,000. It would bring in this year, based on last year's numbers, it would bring in an extra $1.7 million, going from $2.5 million to $4.2 million for the interim year while we sent this out to a committee in the same way we did with the traffic impact fees. The GFCs, in my opinion, are going to have a far graver impact than the impact fees are going to have, and we've had very little community discussion, considering we have a Housing Action Subcommittee, we have a Sustainability Subcommittee, we have Equity Subcommittee. None of these committees have seen this proposal, and it's going to be a huge, huge impact to the city and the system. Making sure that those groups are involved in the discussions is going to be a big deal as well, considering their impact. So this gives us a two-year process, unless we wanted to bring that down, because I realistically think we could get it done in a year. You know, maybe June of next year, I think we could get it done. But it just gives us the ability to actually go through and hear the comprehensive lists, have the substantive policy debates that need to occur. And also, next year, the Public Works Department was already working on a pretty comprehensive analysis of our fees and our fee structures that they were going to be able to present to us next year. And so we can have all the community engagement time as Public Works is getting ready to present to us a lot of other things, doesn't raise the rates on ratepayers in any way, and actually makes it to where I think we can, we can get to a really, really good understanding of the issue in and of itself, and also get to the rates that need to be charged moving forward. So I think, you know, a year and a half to two years is a fair number for us to be able to do it, if it needs to happen quicker than that. I'm very open to it, but it, right now, there's just so much that's up against development. Sorry, I'm getting into other things. I gave you the high points on the, on the policy.
Councilmember Stratton.
So thank you for the time you've been spending talking to me, because you know that I'm, this is, this is just crazy in my head right now. Explain to me how this doesn't increase rates for ratepayers.
In it, we're not raising the rates at all. When we're talking about the, where the numbers came from is that you have to have the projects that need to happen over the course of so many years, that is then divided amongst the developments we think are going to happen, and how much it's going to cost based on projections. And so that's how we break down that cost. So if we don't raise our rates in the next, you know, so however many years, that cost will be transferred to the ratepayer. But if we get this done in a year, this is a way that we can raise the rates significantly, which is more than the year one in the three-year phase-in approach that was presented to us. It brings in more revenue than that first step, and then it gives us the ability to, again, take a comprehensive look at it. So rates aren't going to increase on anybody, because these developments are already, I mean, they're not happening right now, because we have a moratorium on it. And even if we move forward, it's, it's not great market conditions for a lot of housing to be built right now. We saw in the, in the presentation earlier from Steve McDonald that multifamily permits were down, single-family permits were down. So again, we're in a tough building climate, I don't think we're going to see a run on development, and so I don't think that we actually lose out on all that much revenue. I think we actually gain revenue, and I don't think that anything will, will ever need to be transferred to the ratepayers.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Where are you going to gain revenue from?
That's just being, based strictly on the numbers we brought in last year, 66% increase.
Okay, but that's from ratepayers?
No, that's from the GFCs that were charged last year.
To whom?
To the developers, to developments.
We haven't raised those rates for 20 years.
Yes, correct.
And also, this, yours leaves the central incentives area intact, so we're looking at Larry Stone's building, for example, no, no GFCs. The other things that are happening on the West Bank, or the North Bank, no GFCs. All the big projects happening downtown, no GFCs.
Correct, yeah, the podium wasn't charged a GFC, and this is, this is kind of my point, is that there are good arguments for keeping those waivers in place, there are good arguments against them. These are debates that need to take place, and they, they won't happen.
So who pays for the infrastructure that's needed when those get built?
When they get built, the city of Spokane pays for that.
Now, the city of Spokane, where did they get the money?
Yes, from, from other people paying, paying rates and paying fees.
It's called ratepayers, yeah.
Except for those, those expansion projects are largely funded through the GFCs.
You just said that they wouldn't be charged, GFCs.
Correct, they wouldn't be charged in the central waiver area that currently exists. I didn't add anything in there. This waiver area currently exists.
Okay.
I just kept it intact.
Okay, good.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, in the downtown, in that central area, the infrastructure's there. So, I mean, that's one of the big, big reasons why that area doesn't have those fees to begin with. And if you look at the projects, the projects that are going to be completed with the fees are not even in that area. I mean, they're not downtown, they're not in the core of downtown, they're kind of out on the outskirts. And so I think it does make a lot of sense why you would waive specifically for that central area. But I wanted to say, I just, I want to compliment Councilmember Bingle, I think he has done the yeoman's work on this and has just spent an incredible amount of time and effort to come up with, I think, a very well-reasoned, thoughtful plan that frankly, I, you know, I don't love, because it means increased rates, but to Councilmember Bingle's point, they're necessary, we do need them. But what's being proposed is absolutely just too much. It will, it will backfire, and it will have a just harmful, harmful effect on our community. If you think housing choice and affordability is bad now, just wait. So I just appreciate it. I think compromise, 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 compromise is the exact direction that we need to go on this. It is the only option that we have. And I think that what Councilmember Bingle has put forward is exactly that. It gives us time, and it, and it recognizes that there is a need for increased revenues. There are a number of legal concerns that were brought to my attention today, I think all of council received those, and I think this helps us to circumvent many of those legal concerns, because it gives us the time to be thoughtful with regards to GFCs. Rushing this, you know, I, so when the moratorium went in place, we had an hour and five minutes notice. I didn't even get a chance to read it. I didn't even know that GFCs were in that damn thing. So impact fees make a ton of sense, we've got to address those, yes. The GFCs, that was a surprise to me after the fact, and that's the dangers of these last-minute votes. And so I just think we should have, be more thoughtful, be more cautious, you know, we have a housing crisis, and I think what Councilmember Bingle proposed keeps us kind of moving forward, it keeps the momentum, and it doesn't take us backwards. You know, we have a lot of momentum right now with Boca and ADUs and MFTE and everything going for us. It would just be a shame to just sort of rip that away, which is what I see happening as the alternative. And so I'm just, again, grateful that for the work, the effort, and the reasoned kind of middle ground that has been proposed, gives us time to come up with a better plan that we can put forward. So I support.
You have another question, and then I'll be quiet. So what about waivers for people that are building affordable housing all over Spokane? Is that still something you're going to do, or just in the incentive areas?
So it, it hasn't been proposed as an amendment to this, but I mean, I'm certainly open, open to nonprofit housing being, being exempted from the, from the facility's charges as well, and also, you know, to moving the timeline from a, from a two-year process down to, again, June of next year, I think we can get it done. I mean, I'm open to friendly amendments on it.
Councilmembers Zapome.
Yeah, I just had a question for Councilmember Bingle also. I was trying to determine what was your priority for waiving GFCs? So for creating a priority list, what would you determine is the most important thing to be?
So I'm, I'm not creating a prioritized list. The only thing that changed in this ordinance was the amount that was being charged to people who are currently being charged these, these rates. So when it comes to what should be prioritized, who should be prioritized, what should be waived, what shouldn't be waived, those are all incredible questions that we should be talking about over the next year and a half.
So it seems though that the proposal that you have coming forward does prioritize a geographic area. Is that fair?
It maintains the current area. The only thing that I'm trying to create, because we haven't had adequate public input on this, the only thing I'm trying to create is a reasonable financial interim proposal to where we can then determine, okay, what are the actual charges, waivers, everything that should be in the city's plan moving forward.
I appreciate all the work and the ideas and exchanges and thoughts that we've been talking about last few days. To me, if we're going to prioritize and waive GFCs, I want to focus on affordable housing development, not just a geographic area, and that could apply for everywhere over the city. So that's talking about the proposal coming from council president and council.
And I, I think that has great merit to it, and I think that's something that the community should, you know, weigh in on. I think that's something our Housing Action Subcommittee should weigh in on, I think that's something our Equity Subcommittee should weigh in on. I think there's just a lot of people who haven't been able to weigh, weigh in on this. We haven't had a hearing on it, we're going to do an emergency ordinance today. It just feels as if, as we talk about how important community input is, it feels as this is just saying, you know, "Community input be damned, because we're going to do this thing," and we haven't, we have established committees to look at these things, and they haven't taken a look at them.
I thought we had a committee that was? Plan Commission looked at it. The Plan Commission, was it Plan Commission? Was there a Subcommittee of the Plan Commission looking at this? No, they decided not to weigh in on it.
Councilmember Wilkerson and Councilmembers Zapome.
So, thank you, Councilmember Bingle. We've had a conversation about this, and the input and the cost that's being passed on. So my example was, when we did the landlord-tenant, we knew the cost of that door fee was on the tenant, and they were willing to pay that fee for their improved quality of life. To me, the same with this, it's not the builders, it will be the buyers that will be paying these fees. It'll be a pass-through, so it's really not about the developers and the builders, it's about the buyer at the end, that they will be aware of what this house will cost. And yes, there are some market factors certainly at play right now, that we don't have a crystal ball as to how that's going to play out. I like your concept of, you know, we should have had the Equity Subcommittee, we should have had all the Sustainability Action Committee, thank you for bringing it up, but it's never come up in some of our other discussions. So I'm going to hold everybody else accountable when I bring up stuff. I want to go through all those committees before it gets here. So I, I am concerned, and I share, it's 66% now of inflation, if we go a year and a half, a year and a half in the lookback, it may have only really been 50%. So we're still behind the eight ball in these fees of how we get to the point where they are really comparable to what they should be paid for what's being built. And then to me, the, the other known, unknown entity is really, Washdott still has a play, because this is really about one pretty specific area of our community that's driving a lot of this conversation. So I'm still in the fence. Those just are concerns.
Councilmembers Zapome, was that ahead of you?
Yeah, I guess a question for you, Councilmember Bingle, again, is I appreciate having the dialogue and changing things. I'm just wondering, if we were to pass something tonight, does that mean those conversations cannot still continue?
I think they can. I would like you to point me to one piece of legislation in the last year and a half that we've revisited after we passed it, and I, that just doesn't happen. And so I understand what you're saying, I understand the point that you're making, there's nothing that keeps us from going back, it just doesn't happen.
I would say anything that a council member wants to bring forward to a committee and brings and engages stakeholders, they can bring forward at any time through committee. So I don't, if it's a priority of yours, I don't see why we couldn't revisit the conversation.
And we certainly can. I just think, you know, when we, when we have processes in place, right, we have committees for a reason, we have subcommittees for a reason, and then it's something that we want to do, you know what, we don't really need their input, but when it's something we don't want to do- You know what, we don't really need their input, but when it's something we don't want to do. For example, I have a, a, an ordinance that would repeal the waivers for solar hookups, okay? We're talking a $40,000 cost to the city last year, probably a little bit more this year. This was something that the council president asked the Sustainability Action Subcommittee to take a look at and weigh in on. When we're talking about housing, if we push housing further and further outside of the city of Spokane, there is an actual reason for the Sustainable Action Subcommittee to take a look at this, considering the amount of carbon that's going to be added based on travel from Idaho, from Liberty Lake, from Airway Heights, from all the surrounding areas. There is a legitimate reason for these things to be discussed publicly because there's a lot of implications. And so, I do get frustrated sometimes when we say, "Well, we don't have to." Well, it's like, something far less, you know, controversial, something far less monumental is, is something that's being asked to, to go to these committees, but not this. I don't, I, I guess I just don't understand the standard.
Councilmember.
I don't know if this is a popular idea, but I'm hearing Councilmember Bingle say, you know, we don't revisit that. I think we're more likely to revisit if it sunsets. So is there an option of amending your version of the sunset in two years so then that conversation can take place?
I would defer to staff. I don't, I don't know what, what that...
That looks like.
What that looks like at all.
Councilmember, well, actually, Councilmember Kinnear was first, and then Councilmember Cathcart.
I cede my time to...
I, I generally like, like sunset clauses because I, I agree, it makes you revisit. My one concern is, if you do it this way, it's sort of a reverse incentive because you're, you're basically saying, "Hey, wait two years," you know, "before you move forward with your, with your housing development." So, I think from that perspective, I'd be concerned about it.
Councilmember Bingle.
And in the end, when we're talking about who's going to end up paying the difference, currently, our, our renters, our homeowners, everybody's paying the difference as we do not have the supply to meet the demand. We're watching housing costs skyrocket across the city. And whereas you're looking at who is paying for that now, currently, people are paying for that now. And it's not 50 cents a month, it's not a dollar a month, we're talking hundreds of dollars a month. And so when we're talking about the implications, the financial implications, the financial hardship that could be placed on one of our citizens, I think that the lack of housing supply results in far higher costs every month to the, to the citizen than something if we waited a year to put this in. I, I, I just think that it's, it's a night and day comparison.
All right.
Councilmember Zepon.
You're, you're making me think a lot. But a new idea that I'm wondering about is I, I'm seeing a cost of like, Laetow Valley, the average price is 475. A third of those are over $515,000. And this is automatically going to increase the cost of that house by $20,000. I'm just wondering, why wouldn't the market adjust and change the type of house that might be needed within that price range? So if it's still at 515, maybe the square footage of the house has to decrease to meet that need. So I don't see it as automatically 100% being added on. But if the market's at 515, why wouldn't it adjust in other ways? Maybe, maybe you're going to have a one-car garage instead of a three-car garage. Like, I don't understand why that's not part of it too, instead of automatically being added on.
I guess my, my concern with that is, you know, these, these things don't happen in a vacuum. And when you adjust the market rate of, of new housing, that does have an actual impact on, on existing housing stock. But we're also talking apartments, we're talking citywide, we're talking, you know, not just Laetow, we're talking the entire city here with new costs. And so, these are, you know, huge decisions and, and impacts. You know, this isn't just exclusive to one small geographic area, which could be a different discussion, maybe, maybe not, but...
And then when we're talking, you know, yeah, you're talking about the Laetow area having 515, you know, $1,000 homes, a third of them 515. But we're basically taking the problems of the Laetow area and imposing it on the entire city. And that's one of the things, again, that should be discussed. And I don't disagree with, you know, with Marlene and FCS and, you know, in the numbers that they came up with. The problem is that we just haven't had the time to actually review it and, and put some sunlight on it. We just haven't had the ability to do that so far. And so, what we might find out in June of next year or two years from now, what we might find out is, they were right all along, here's how we adjust, here's how we do it. But at least the public has had the opportunity to weigh in on it. Because again, this is a substantial impact to the community and to the, to the housing market.
So are you suggesting that we keep the moratorium for another year? Because if, if we don't, people will pull building permits and come under that lower rate or no rate at all?
I, I think it would be better for the community if, instead of imposing the GFCs that would impact overnight in council president's version, I think it would be better of the two alternatives. Not to say that it's good, it would be a better of the two options to extend the moratorium.
For a year?
I don't think it should be a year. I think, again, we convened the Traffic Impact Fee Committee and we got that done in six months. I think we could do something very similar with the GFCs based on timing of what's coming up. Like I said, I think June of next year, we could easily have this thing done, allowing for some extensions into, you know, potentially, there's a deferral here, there's a deferral there, something like that. I think that gives us plenty of time to get it done.
All right, I'm going to just weigh in on a couple of things. First, I just wanted to take off where Councilmembers of the pound left. And that is that GFCs and traffic impact fees are not like sales tax. They do not get added to the price of the house. The market determines what a house sells for regardless of how much it costs to build it. Over the long term, if you don't have the right conditions for people to build homes, builders will get out of the market in the long term. But in terms of anything that's planned or in, in progress, they'll build them and it'll be whatever. And you'll look at the market and if someone doesn't want to buy the brand-new house, they might buy a house that's one-year-old. But it's not, it's not an automatic cost. It really is a cost to the builder. And the, the core of this whole dispute is not about what the price should be, it is who should pay for it. We worked with the administration at the front end of this. The traffic impact fee was the original impetus in, just in Laetow Valley. But for years and years, our water and wastewater treatment departments have been just struggling because all the GFCs have been waived, they haven't been raised, they don't have enough money to do their projects. We heard, I think, from Marlene that over the last five years, after all the waivers and, and keeping the fees low, we'd only collected a little over $9 million in five years for capital projects on water. And that's not even the cost of one water tower, we're trying to build several. So they have been struggling with it. And the cannon's been kicked down the road and this council and this mayor, to their credit, said that ends now. We're going to, we're going to get this right. And the mayor announced early on in the moratorium, she would get her staff going and they would get the numbers and we have consultants. And the numbers they have given us, although there's a few people I've heard maybe dispute some of them, but overall, everyone agrees that the numbers need to be higher. And it's based on analysis, not on inflation. Because we all know, especially in building and construction, the costs of construction are going higher than inflation. So, the numbers that utilities gave us were the numbers that it takes. And council has not gotten in the weeds on that. We have not contested anything, we have accepted all the numbers that they've said. They advised that we should get rid of this central incentives area because it was too big of a waiver. And the only real question I think council has at this moment is, who pays? The person that's building a new house that is causing us to build a new pump station or water tower? Or everybody else pay more, even though they've already, their houses were already hooked up, all those GFCs were already paid, should they be paying more? It's just, who pays? And one proposal the mayor had to spread it out over five years, that would be $25 million subsidy to the home builders over that time and $25 million that the ratepayers would have to pay. You know, not a huge amount for each one of them, but they've got to be wondering, "Why am I paying for this, for this person that's creating that?" The Utilities Department and the mayor came up with the idea of two zones based on the fact that hookups closer to the river really don't have the, the same number of projects and same type of projects. Why should they pay for the pump towers at the top of the South Hill or Laetow or Five Mile? That made sense to me, I accepted them at that. But it did, when, when you do it that way and people pay what it actually costs, it shows how much subsidy we were doing and how much we were distorting the market. Because we were essentially, by our policies, I don't think intentionally, but we were incentivizing building developers to go out into the outlawing areas, the places where there wasn't infrastructure, to build more, requiring even more infrastructure. We, Councilmember Kinnear and I sat down with developers and different people over the last week or so. And we did come up with a compromise that we'll be also offering potentially. And the change was this. Let's set up the incentives for the housing that we're really missing the most. And that is moderate to low-income housing that's affordable. And we worked with the administration and they came up with language that I think is great, which says, instead of a geographic incentive that leaves Kendall Yards paying no GFCs, even though Jim Frank says he doesn't need GFC relief there anymore, it would pay it based on the family household income. And we set that number at, the utilities set it at 115% of the median income. That means for housing that's dedicated permanently to people who are making up to $75,000 a year right now, it would go up with, with, as income goes up, they would pay no GFCs, zero. And then, the, the lost revenues from that would be paid likely from utility taxes that nobody else is getting charged on top of their bill, but just that's there. So you don't lose the amount of money to build new water towers in all the places we need new housing. But the builders would be incentivized to build that kind of housing. And that's what we're missing. So I think, actually, if you combine our Boca, which allows us four units, and maybe the legislature's going to say six units per parcel, and you have reduced the fees by $10,000 to $17,000 for those households, you're going to see an explosion of housing for the people that need it the most. And the challenge is that in the very short term, there's some disruption to expectations. My understanding is that the administration is taking the position that all the 72 projects that are kind of pending out there, they will be under the old system. So they can go ahead once the moratorium is over and they can just start going. But I think it's a fair outcome. Because without it, even at 66% increase, there's a delta of millions of dollars that ratepayers are going to have to pay, many of whom can't afford it, and it's certainly not benefiting them. And so, that's why I think the compromise that we offered in collaboration with the administration, I think, is more effective. And so, I really appreciate Councilmember Bingle and Councilmember Cathcart and everyone's actually involvement in this, understanding that. But I would prefer to set the rates the way that our consultants say they need to be, targeted waivers for the majority of families in the city of Spokane. And then if we need to tweak it and go through those committees, we can. The piece that's different about these compared to any other legal or policy thing is that under Washington law, people get vested when they put in their permit. So we can't wait six months or a year and then go back and recapture that money and, and change it. We have to have it in place. We could always give discounts, we can always give incentives, we can always give waivers. But we have to have those fees in there, otherwise we are going to lose for however many months, millions of dollars, and ratepayers will have to pay them because there's no other way. So, that's why I'm opposed to this.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, question. How would your, I guess your proposal affect multifamily specifically?
Yeah, it would be, if it, it's the same, it'd be the same for single-family as multifamily. If those units, it's just like our MFTE program right now. If you want to participate in the MFT, the 12-year, the 20-year, you say for that period of time, we're going to rent the units for 115% or two people with households of 115% at less than 30% of their monthly income. So you, you designated that. So it applies the same, it's just that instead of one owner of a single-family home, it would be an owner who's renting it to other people. Or hopefully, the condo bill that we're all supporting gets in, you could do condos.
But what, I guess what would be the percentage of affordable units they would have to meet? And how would that all happen? Because this would be upfront, so the cost is going to get baked into the rent upfront long before there's ever a tenant in the room.
On, on this, it will, so on this one, the way it's currently drafted, again, subject, further study, whatever, it would be 100% of the tenants would be for, as opposed to the MFT where it's like it's only 20%. So it'd be 100%, but they're not, if they, they make that agreement, they're not paying any GFCs. So they're not fronting the GFCs. They're saying, "No, we want to go the affordable route for moderate-income families. That's what we're going, that's going to be our business model for this building." They don't pay any GFCs.
So they, then they couldn't put it on the renter or the...
No, no, it wouldn't. It would just, the whole project costs less per, per unit, so...
So, just a quick question, then I'll let you go. So, if we stick with the compromise that was made, we would still, we could still have the understanding that we pass it because of the moratorium, right? We want to get done with that. And then, I mean, we'd have to be really proactive to set up a group that immediately starts talking about, because you've said it would be open for those tweaks and changes if we want to do that. But if we don't do it right away after something passes, we're going to miss that opportunity because we've got so many people involved, right? So we could, yeah, we've got the home builders, we've got SLIC, we've got other developers and they're, they're involved right now, that we'd have to do that immediately to set up that group to talk about what would need to be tweaked.
Yeah, and I recognize, talk is cheap, so, but I, I am very happy to be involved in that. And again, going back to, we talked a little bit about the resolution that Steve McDonald and Marlene are bringing forward as far as additional incentives and waivers. So in addition to just the workforce housing one, there are other ones. I think Steve was talking about projects of citywide significance and other things. And I've talked to, I think you, about some developers who say, "Hey, I've got this project. I want to convert office building into residential. Could we, if you can give me a bit of a waiver on that to do that?" And that, you know, the council could say, based on evidence, yeah, we can take some of those general fund tax dollars and put it as reductions because we all know that we have to convert all that vacant downtown office space into residential. I mean, that's part of the thing. But it would be targeted as opposed to, as a matter of right, they just get it. I'm going to, Councilmember Bingle's been patient.
Yeah, and, and I think you brought up a lot of really good points. And those are all points that need to be openly discussed with, with the public to get the community's impact, to get, you know, the first-time homebuyers, we're going to need to know how it affects them. Elderly couples wanting to move down out of housing, how is it going to affect them? There's a lot of people that are going to be affected by this and we need to get that significant amount of community out, input done, I think, before we, we pass this. So, another question is, who would, who would be paying for the incentives in your, in your model? Who pays for the incentives?
It comes out of the general fund. So what happens is...
Of the 20% per utility.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not a 20% on top. So it, let's just say you paid $10,000 in GFCs if you did that. What, under current law, the Utility Department already has to pay 2,000 of that 10 and they just have to give it to the general fund, no strings attached. So it doesn't, it's, it's not taken away from the infrastructure fund, they already have to take it out of the infrastructure fund. And so the, the concept that I understood from the administration is to take a portion or all of those dollars that would go to the general fund unrestricted and put those in an incentive fund for dedicated kinds of projects, whatever criteria. And they're going to come to us with a proposal. And again, a great agenda item for all the subcommittees that you mentioned to say, "All right, what would be, how would be the best way to do that?"
And back to that, I guess, why, why is it important for certain pieces of legislation to go before these committees and not others? What is the, what determines what needs to go before them and what doesn't?
Well, it's whatever is brought before them. This, this particular initiative, my, my sense is that the administration handled the outreach on it. I mean, we've got the printouts, they put them up there and said, "This is the outreach that we did and didn't do, planning commission." And I think, I'm just, I don't recall a conversation with the administration about it, but it seemed like they had the consultant, they had the expertise. We weren't talking about how much was needed in that. We were just talking about, okay, who pays? We were just talking about, okay, who pays? And they did that within the timeframe, but we're in this moratorium timeframe, so artificial. And then because of these vesting rules, that's why it also makes it artificial. So I don't think there's anyone that said, no, don't do it, but I don't know that anyone affirmatively said, let's do it, within that timeframe, doesn't mean we can't do it now.
So when we send policies to this group, who determines, who determines what goes to these groups?
Any council member can, for instance, you mentioned the solar thing, I said, all right, I bet they might have an opinion on it. And that is a law that we're reconsidering, to, you know, to say that. But no, anyone can go to whoever the staff person is and say, hey, I'd love them to take a whack at this. And they also come up with their own stuff. Councilmember Cathcart was ahead.
Yeah, I just, the one thing I just want to point out, I mean, we are not flush with cash right now, in fact, we are hemorrhaging money. And so as much as I love investing in these projects through the general fund when we can, there is no guarantees that we can, in any time in the near future, afford to do so. And so I guess, you know, because we're not, it's not like we're creating new revenue, it's just taking existing revenue and spending it in a different way. So, you know, we're going to have a meeting in a couple of weeks where we talk about priorities, and this could be one of the things that we talk about, but for budgeting. But, you know, we have got to get a handle on our budget before we start committing, and we just keep committing damn more things. I mean, we've just, we've got to learn this lesson, that we cannot just keep committing money that we don't have. And so I just, I worry about that quite a bit. And so I have a lot of fear over essentially jacking up the entire housing market, costing everybody, but we're going to take from the general fund that we already can't afford to do, to do some work over here for some small projects that might help a few people. I just, I don't understand that. I don't think that that's the right, the right policy or the right direction.
If I was channeling Steve McDonald, I think he would say is, these are not existing revenues, these are new revenues coming in, and if you invest them wisely in projects, it will increase revenues quite a bit more, because the property tax values are going to go up. So I think that's what he would say to that. But Councilmember Kinnear?
This is a little long, I apologize. Got this email from Marlene, January 31st was the PIES presentation on schedule for bringing forward transportation impact fees and GFCs. February 16th, 15th was the council study session on GFCs. February 16th was the virtual public meeting, an invitation was emailed to a list of 90 developers was sent on February 6th announcing the public meeting. A reminder email about the public meeting was resent February 15th. February 21st, follow-up email to the same developer list was sent on February 21st with links to both the study session and public meeting. 24th, met with interested developers to answer questions and review the modeled information. The 24th webpage was published and links provided. 27th, PIES presentation, an email was sent to the same list of 90 developers informing stakeholders of PIES prior to the meeting. 28th, GFC information included in the community update, that's 85,000 emails. The update was also shared on City's Facebook page. March 6th, extensive briefing at Council's 330. March 7th, additional email sent to the developer list. March 8th, Downtown Spokane Partnership Policy Committee. March 9th, S3R3 presentation, not sure what that is.
That's the West Plains.
Oh, okay. March 9th, discussion with Spokane Low Income Housing Consortium, March 10th. The Northeast PDA presentation that was postponed because the PDA board doesn't have enough folks able to attend. So she did quite a bit of work on outreach, I don't think there's any question. It was condensed in a very short amount of time, was probably going to be your protestation.
That's exactly it. February 6th was five weeks ago. So even if you did reach out to a lot of people in five weeks, it takes time to digest information and actually look at what are the long-term implications of what this happens. And so, again, I'm not saying that they didn't reach out to a lot of people, I'm saying we haven't had enough time to digest the information. And back to something else that was earlier, why the central investment area? The central investment area is very similar to our strategic investment area, which is it's surrounding low-income census tracts. And so why does it make sense to do it for that particular program, but not this one? Again, a very good question, and one that should be debated in public, because they both have their pros and cons. That's the point of all of this, is that all of them, both sides have their pros and cons. Both have very good arguments for and against, and we should be having those discussions. That is the problem.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Going back to the original, what you originally said, this isn't about the cost, this isn't about the numbers, this is about who pays. If we wait for a year and we don't put anything in place, and we're just going to talk about it for a year, then there are a lot of folks that are going to vest, pull permits, and go forward, and the ratepayers are going to pay. And that's what you're going to have to ask yourself. Or we could go ahead, put these in place, and have the conversation, and get involvement, and make changes as we go.
Sorry.
Can I just add? I'm trying to understand what the compromise is, I apologize if this seems like I'm out of the loop, but I'm, I've just heard there's a compromise, and I'm trying to understand...
The compromise was the version that we filed on Friday.
Okay.
It's not, we have, there's two compromises.
Correct.
Two proposed compromises, a Friday version and a today version.
Okay.
And in the end, who pays? The question is the citizens of Spokane. If the person is buying the home, they're paying. So in the end, the developers are not paying these rates. The people who are buying the homes are the ones who are going to be paying for this. And every, or renting, correct. And every dollar that we increase is another dollar that is taken from, somebody from the city of Spokane, out of their pocket. And when you're talking about $20,000, first off, that number is far too low, because we're not talking impact fees or anything like that. If you're looking at a $30,000 increase on somebody's home, regardless of what it is, on a 30-year mortgage, you're talking $65,000. You're, this, these rates aren't just something that the person is paying upfront, they're paying these rates for 30 years. It's a significant amount of money that they end up having to pay because of a one-time upfront fee.
That is assuming, oh, I don't want to get into that again. A lot of people, though, already have a home, they're not going to move. A lot of folks in my district, in your district, in your district, they've paid these for 20 years, they don't want to pay anymore.
Councilmembers of POM?
All right, I was wondering about a third potential compromise, to make things more complicated, but I was wondering, what would it look like if we adopted Councilmember Bingle's proposal for one year, and instead of a sunset, then it automatically kicked in to your proposal?
The problem is you lose those revenues for the, so every million dollars you lose, the delta between 66% and 100% is money that you lose.
But just for one year?
That's still...
Yeah, but that's money that ratepayer pays. But Councilmember Bingle has a different math.
It's not the difference between 66% and 100%, because the fees that we're proposing are, in some cases, well over 1,000%. So the delta between 66% and 1,000%, it's not 66% and 100%, we're talking 66% and 1,000%.
Oh, okay, so it's even bigger, it's a bigger delta, okay.
Yes, totally. But again, it is a much higher increase that the compromise that has been proposed is offering.
If you're a family with more than $75,000 of income, if it's under $75,000, you're not paying any.
Right. So who, I forgot who, I know I made, no, you made a motion.
His motion is passed. Councilmember Bingle's motion is to substitute his version.
First, and you've, you made the motion, you seconded, can we vote?
I have one more question. For you, so if, what would happen on a spec, or, you know, home, where they don't necessarily have a buyer, they're building it, and, I mean, they're basically going to put all the permit costs, the fees, everything into the cost of that home that the eventual buyer, so regardless of what their income is, I'm not sure how they would get exempted from this when the cost is already baked into the project.
Well, what happens is, you, if you wanted to get the waiver, you have to have something on your deed that says, we will always make sure that this house always has to be sold to an owner that was within 115% of the area median income. So that can change whenever. And we do the same thing with the MFTs, and we do the same thing, or we don't, but Habitat Humanity does the same thing. So you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't do a house, you wouldn't do a $500,000 house in this, you would, it would be a smaller structure or part of a...
So, but you're saying it would only be sold to somebody with 115, but does that necessarily mean that it's going to be sold at a certain cost?
No, it can only be sold at a cost that, when financed, 30-year mortgage, their mortgage payment and their utility bill projected are going to be within $23,000, $24,000 a year, under the current...
It sort of sounds like we're creating sort of a citywide landbank in a way, and I like landbanks, but my concern is that, I feel like you need somebody who's sort of managing that, because you're going to have a situation where you might have a homebuyer, you know, living in a home, then they go to sell, and they can't, they just can't sell, they can't, for whatever reason, you know, whether the price or the, they can't find somebody at 115%, they can meet the market, you know, the price of that home. And I just, I worry we're sort of creating a weird scenario.
They can sell, it's just that they have to sell for a price within that same thing. So it restricts their, it doesn't restrict any profit, but it restricts a windfall. So you don't get, you're not the first buyer, and then five years later, and you get a 300% thing, so it, but that's the model that's out there right now, as you said, with landbanks that aren't necessarily, the old landbanks were kind of one development, and all the houses were. Now it's mobile, it can be anywhere.
Okay, so you're saying that this house, for its entire life, if it had a GFC waiver, that it would have to be sold to somebody under 115% AMI? Okay, so then the person purchasing it, if the market did what it's doing right now, they would actually be losing out on the equity in their home commensurate with the rest of the market?
No, because they bought it at, they bought it with that there, so they're not losing anything, because that's, they agreed to that, to get into that house at that price.
But they, but they are going to lose it if, if the equity continues to go up in the ways that our market has in the last five, six years, they continue to lose it, because they actually have to sell it to a certain price point, and as the market goes up, more and more and more and more people are getting priced out of being able to purchase a home.
No, but they're getting a subsidized house to start, so if that's the agreement, they don't have to do that.
It's like Habitat.
It's just like a Habitat.
I understand, I understand. And Habitat is great, but we don't need Habitat for the entire city.
No, we don't. But this would give options for that, it would basically expand Habitat. And there's a lot that, at least in my experience, is the people that are in the most trouble are, they cannot afford to get into the equity market, because there's no houses affordable for that. This would give a whole group of people the ability to do that.
So then again, if somebody gets a GFC waiver in one of these areas, then that person forever can only sell it for 115% AMI, and so...
Sell it to someone with a family household income of 115%.
Correct, yeah, yeah, no, no, I totally...
Which is the majority of people in the city. So it's not a small group, it's more people than not are in that category, so it's not that big of a restriction.
Can I just apologize? I have to add this, because I've been trying to figure out a couple of things. The administration is not in support of the communication that was sent out on Friday, so I'm trying to understand when we say there's a different second proposal. The proposal we were aware of was the initial one by the council president and Councilmember Kinnear, then the alternative proposal from Councilmember Bingle, the 66%, and now there's another one.
No, 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 there was an original proposal
Right.
that was out there, that administration staff did that, Councilmember Kinnear and I sponsored. And then we made another compromise proposal on Friday, and Councilmember Bingle made one today.
Okay, that's what I mean. So the one that was compromised on Friday is not a proposal the administration supports. The proposal the administration supports is the proposal put in by Councilmember Bingle. I just want to make sure that was clear, because I think there was an impression that the administration supported this, the version that you sent out on a Friday, and that is not the case. I just want to make sure that was clear to everybody.
I'm clear that the mayor does not.
Okay.
But we got the language from the administration.
I understand that, that's why I wanted to make sure, I know you got it from the staff, I just want to make sure the administration, the mayor, does not support that version, she's in support of Councilmember Bingle. Thank you.
We are clear on that.
I would like to call for the question.
All right, so the motion before us is to substitute Councilmember Bingle's version. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. All right, that doesn't pass at this point. Is there a motion to substitute the version that's in the council packet?
Moved.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
I have a separate motion I'd like to make.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of substituting the version that's on the posted packet indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, any abstentions? Okay, that substituted.
I'd like to make a motion to send it back to committee.
Second.
So your motion is to defer?
My motion is to send it back to committee for consideration.
But not have a vote tonight?
Not have a vote tonight.
Defer in favor of sending it back to committee?
Send it back to committee.
Okay.
And what committee?
I think that there are significant concerns when it comes to both housing implications, when it comes to environmental implications, when it comes to equity implications. I think all of those committees need to weigh in on this, and so without their, again, if something as what I think, you know, minute as my solar permits needs to go to it, then I think that this one should also go back, because the implications are large.
And just, and this is, in supporting you articulating, but it's the subcommittees that you want to go to, not the committees, right?
And do you want that to also, are you having a deferral go along with that? I mean, an extension of the moratorium going along with that?
Yes.
And so what are, how long are you deferring?
May 1st.
May 1st?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't...
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Yes.
I don't think you can extend the moratorium tonight.
That's what I was going to say.
That was my question, I didn't...
I thought James Richmond told us that we could.
I think we have to have had a hearing.
We have to have a hearing.
Notice and a hearing.
James is not here, I don't know if Elizabeth feels informed enough to answer that.
I think Lyndon's coming in.
I'm not sure I know the answer to that, that's a James Richmond question, but I think in order to have the moratorium, you have to have specific reasons. And I think they're pretty well-defined in the rules or in the state statute. I could take a look at that and get back to you.
The statute I read last time we talked about it was that you have to have, if you want to renew the moratorium, you have to have a hearing before the point of renewal. So I'm not sure you have that option to renew. You would have to basically start over with a new moratorium.
So my understanding is that technically the moratorium actually expired yesterday. So on an hour and five minutes notice, we were able to enact a moratorium six months ago, why would it be any different now?
And that's a slightly different question, because that would be a new moratorium.
Or to extend, we'd have to have a hearing.
But no, you don't have to have a hearing...
I'm not sure you're queued up to do a new moratorium.
I think you, you don't have to have a hearing to do a new moratorium. I mean, you'd have to write something up, but, but I think that's the distinction. So you couldn't extend the moratorium, because it's expired, but you could, you could bring them, try to get some, I don't think we'll do it in the next five minutes, but you could come up with paperwork, and we could suspend the rules and add it at 6 o'clock to create a new moratorium. Councilmember Cathcart, then Councilmember...
Yeah, I was going to offer the same motion, similar motion, I was going to specifically remand it back to the plan commission, in part because I think it's, and I realize a week ago, we tried to defer it for more conversation, more time, and that didn't happen, but I actually think, given your substitution, it really demands that it go back. I mean, this is a significant change from what we have ever done before, and to do it here at 4:40 with zero public knowledge that, you know, really, I mean, minimal public knowledge that this is happening, and we should have some public engagement on this. I mean, it's a big deal, it's a big change, and basically a citywide sort of landbank-type policy, it's a lot. So I would just really suggest that it would be good to go back, and even if it's not plan commission, to our subcommittees even, just some kind of place where we can get some public input on this idea would be, I think, really beneficial to the seven of us up here. So I'll be supporting the motion.
So why don't you do it tonight, and then by that time you would have the moratorium language to create a new moratorium, to have that public input for May whatever? Just take the old moratorium, rework the wording, and have that ready to go for 6 o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, I look forward to having 20 minutes to draft that up, but...
Can I weigh in on that? I just asked the city attorney a couple of questions. We would need to do a new moratorium at this point, because the current one did expire yesterday, and I just asked him if he could draft one up right now, so, there you go.
Well, but the moratorium we put in place was specific for the fees, so...
That's correct, they would have to change the language.
They had to change the language.
They had to change the language, and what would be that more, what would be the reason for the moratorium now since we have a fees that have been brought to us by the administration and their consultant?
More public outreach.
Just more public outreach. That would be a valid reason to extend the moratorium on just public outreach alone.
To May whatever he said. What did you say?
But I don't know, I don't know the answer. A lawyer will have to tell us that, so.
Yeah.
It's May 1st.
So we can do that tonight?
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion and see if I can, yeah, see if I can get it together by 6.
All right.
So clarity, where are we at right now? We've approved the motion that was submitted on Friday.
Yes.
And that's when...
And that's been posted.
That's been posted. The substituted version. The substituted person where then administration weighed in, that was not what they supported. Okay.
Yeah.
Council president question?
Yeah.
To save us from asking it later at 6 o'clock. If we were to extend the moratorium?
Or no, a new one.
A new one, sorry. If we were to create a new moratorium until May 1st, right? To do that outreach during that period, though, that is still the issue of not bringing in enough revenue to cover the, up to $25 million to fund the GFCs. So even though it's a short period of time, it would still be lost revenue during that time that would have to eventually be passed on.
There would be no building permits issued.
No, no, there would because the moratorium's only for Lata.
Yeah, only in that area.
Yeah.
But the GFCs would still be the current rate, and there would be lost revenue on that.
For three months.
So the rate pairs would cover that gap.
One month, one and a half months.
One and a half months only.
Anyway, food for thought. We do have more business to do. The, but great conversation. Appreciate everyone engaging. We have, the administration has requested that we have executive session to talk about potential, well, no, actual litigation and briefly, and then also labor negotiations. So we'll be adjourning, well, recessing into executive session until 5:30. We don't anticipate taking any further action when we come back, and if for some reason we need to go longer, we'll extend.
So are we all done with the agenda stuff?
Yes.
Did we, we don't have to approve it, right?
Nope.
Okay.
So they don't hate me.
All right, we're back from executive session and we're not taking any action. We are adjourned to our 6:00 PM meeting. Thanks.
Michael, I'll keep these down here. We need them.